Hello everyone, I am Melanie Ungsma, publisher of The Lansing Journal. The Lansing Journal's YouTube channel is being sponsored this month by IKG Property Maintenance. IKG Property Maintenance is based locally in our community, but they do work across the country: painting, design, fixing, cleaning, and other property maintenance services for residential, commercial, and even industrial customers. I've included their contact information and links in the description below. IKG Property Maintenance is a trusted, respected local business, and we are so proud to have them sponsor our videos this month. Thank you IKG!
Hello everyone, I am Melanie Ungsma, publisher of The Lansing Journal. Here with Carol Schwarko, our managing editor. We are in the courtroom at the Lansing Police Department, which is where Village Board Meetings in Lansing are held, because there's plenty of seating here.
The room is quiet now and empty, but just about 20 minutes ago it was filled with more than 100 people.
It was packed.
It was completely packed. A little warm, but okay. It was exciting, a lot of energy in the room, and that was because new members of the Lansing Village Board were sworn in, including new mayor Brian Hardy.
There was a regular board meeting with Mayor Item presiding. This was her last meeting to preside over. So we held a regular board meeting with regular business and public comments and all of that. And then that board adjourned, how do you pronounce that term?
Sin dia?
It was a Latin term.
It looks like sign die. It means, it's a Latin term meaning that they were adjourning the board for the final time.
For, and not perhaps reconvening, because this was the end of their era.
Correct.
So that was interesting, just a little interesting detail. And the mayor and the clerk sort of left without ceremony. Administrator Podgorsky wished them well and said there had been a ceremony earlier in the day, so it's not like they went unnoticed or un-sankt, but it wasn't a public thanking, so that was a little different.
And then they, you know, they stepped aside, which I thought was kind of interesting. They left the room, you know, convivially. I think to sort of just make space, you know, literally and proverbially make space for the new folks.
Yeah. So then, all of the, it was, I think what got to me tonight is, for one thing, there were about 120 people in this room. I mean, it was packed and standing room only, literal standing room. And just to see that many people come out to witness the transition of power, the peaceful transition of power, to participate in democracy, and just to see the community come together in support of the process and in support of the new administration, it was heartwarming.
Yeah, there were really a lot of people really gladfully in support of the new mayor and the new trustees, and the existing trustees, the ones who are sitting on the board as well. So a lot of good feeling in the room.
Yeah, it was nice to see families participating. As each new member of the administration was sworn in, they were sworn in one at a time, their whole family would come up and surround them, and then they were read the oath and all of that. It was, you know, they were holding their kids, they were holding their grandkids. It was just a nice to see families involved in local government like this.
A lot of words of commitment and saying, you know, they know that people are counting on them, the residents are counting on them to do the right thing, to represent them, and, you know, again, making their commitment, their verbal commitment to do that.
So trustee Abassi reminded the incoming board members, especially the ones who have not served before, that it really is about the people. You know, every decision that we make as a board, he said, is for the people, and as long as you keep the people in mind, that's what board service is, that's what it's supposed to be. And just to hear that from a sitting trustee encouraging new trustees to remember, this is not about you, this is not about salary or power, it's about service, it's about serving the people.
And he said, you know, he said, "That's not always easy." I appreciated that comment. He said, "It's not about what you want, it's about what all the residents want," and that's not always the easy thing. So we call upon our elected officials to make the difficult decisions and to be, to act outside of themselves, you know, and not come from a place of that personal want or need or ego or anything, and to make it about the people. So I was also impressed with trustee Abassi's words in that way, and he wished them all a lot of luck.
Yeah. And I want to mention Judge Panicki, who was the guy who swore in, I think he swore in clerk Grady Perovich and Mayor Hardy.
Yes, he did. Former Lansing attorney, village attorney.
Yes. And he mentioned way back in the day when he was around that there was a time, Lansing has term limits, you can serve only two terms, and he said there was a time when a motion was put forth to make an ordinance repealing that term limit and letting people serve as long as they wanted, and Lansing voted that down. Lansing wants term limits. And he said that's a sign of a healthy community.
Yeah.
He says that's a reminder that the people sitting in these seats, this is a time of service, and it's going to be over in at most eight years, and then they have to go back to being regular citizens. So I just liked what he had to say about that.
Yeah.
He said Lansing is unusual in that respect. There aren't a lot of communities that have term limits. So I was touched by that. I don't know exactly why, but I found it very meaningful.
I felt like he was kind of implying like, hey, I've got eight years to make a difference, let's go, you know, let's hit the ground runnings.
So it was really a very, a very, I don't even know the right word, just a good meeting. Just a nice to see local democracy at work, and nice to see the crowd come out, nice to see how touched Brian is to be elected. This means a lot to him. So what you'll see in the rest of the video is the short meeting, Mayor Item's last meeting. You'll see her and clerk Payne exit the room, and then you'll see the new board get sworn in, and all of them had a chance to make a speech, so you'll see all of that. And then you got an interview with Mayor Hardy after the crowd left, and we'll show that as well.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Village of Lansing Board Meeting for May 6, 2025. Would you please stand and join me in the presence of the House of Representatives.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I ask for a motion to approve. Trustee Zeldin Russ?
Aye.
Trustee Smith?
Aye.
Trustee Hardy?
Aye.
Trustee Abassi?
Aye.
The trustees have the minutes from the village board meeting of April 15, 2025. Are there questions or discussion on those minutes? Ask for a motion to approve.
So, second.
Ask the village clerk to please call the roll. Trustee Hardy?
Aye.
Trustee Abassi?
Aye.
Trustee Grady Perovich?
Aye.
Trustees Zeldin Russ?
Aye.
Trustee Smith?
Aye.
Trustees also have the minutes from the committee of the whole meeting of April 15, 2025. Are there questions or discussion on those minutes? Ask for a motion to approve.
So, second.
Ask the village clerk to please call the roll. Trustee Hardy?
Aye.
Trustee Abassi?
Aye.
Trustee Zeldin Russ?
Aye.
Trustee Smith?
Aye.
Trustee Grady Perovich?
Aye.
And lastly, the trustees have the minutes from the executive session meeting on April 15, 2025. Are there questions or discussion on those minutes? Ask for a motion to approve.
So, second.
Ask the village clerk to please call the roll. Trustee Hardy?
Aye.
Trustee Abassi?
Aye.
Trustee Grady Perovich?
Aye.
Trustee Smith?
Aye.
Trustees Zeldin Russ?
Aye.
Thank you. I have nothing under the mayor's report, village administrator's report. Mr. Podgorsky?
Nothing this evening, mayor.
Thank you. Village attorney's report, Mr. Walsh.
Yes, mayor, members of the board. Item 9B, ordinance 25-018, related to a scriptener's error. What that's dealing with is, there was an exhibit in the redevelopment agreement that you approved, which identified certain costs that were eligible for reimbursement, and originally paving had been starred as an eligible site work cost, and that was an oversight of supposed to be the Thornton Lansing Road entrance drive. So all this exhibit does is switch the two, as one being, one that was eligible originally is now not, and one that was not originally now is as a result of this amendment, and the total cost is a difference of like $70. Okay?
Anything else, Mr. Walsh?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Finance and insurance, trustee Abassi.
Thank you, mayor. A couple of items here, and I'd like to make a motion to approve total payroll for the dates April 17, and May 5, 2025, in the amount of $1,389,060.09. We would approve total accounts payable for the dates April 15 through May 6, 2025, in the amount of $1,985,965.34.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve total payroll for 25, May 6, 2025. Are there questions or discussion? Ask the village clerk, please call the roll. Trustee Abassi?
Aye.
Trustee Hardy?
Aye.
Trustee Smith?
Aye.
Trustee Zeldin Russ?
Aye.
Trustee Grady Perovich?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion, we would adopt ordinance number 25-018, correcting the scriptener's error and authorizing and approving the execution of a first amendment to the Tax Income Financing Development Agreement by and between the Village of Lansing and MSL Investments LLC related to the property located at 1600 Thornton Lansing Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 25-018, correcting the scriptener's error and authorizing and approving the execution of a first amendment to the Tax Income Financing Development Agreement by and between the Village of Lansing and MSL Investments LLC related to the property located at 1600 Thornton Lansing Road. Are there questions or discussion? Ask the village clerk to please call the roll. Trustee Abassi?
Aye.
Trustee Hardy?
Aye.
Trustee Smith?
Aye.
Trustees Zeldin Russ?
Aye.
Trustee Grady Perovich?
Aye.
Thank you, mayor. No further items this time.
Thank you. Airport and economic development, trustee Smith?
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, Village of Lansing, family and friends. I have two items. First, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 25-019, authorizing the execution of an agreement between the Village and Chicago Title Land Trust Company for the purchase and sale of the property commonly known as 17147 Torrance Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 25-019, authorizing the execution of an agreement between the Village and Chicago Title Land Trust Company for the purchase and sale of the property commonly known as 17141, I'm sorry, 17147 Torrance Avenue. Are there questions or discussion? Village clerk will have trouble calling, we'll discuss her friends. I can tell if I ever call the roll. Trustee Smith?
Aye.
Trustee Zeldin Russ?
Aye.
Trustee Hardy?
Aye.
Trustee Abassi?
Aye.
Trustee Grady Perovich?
Aye.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 25-020, authorizing the execution of an agreement between the Village and Dorojo Investment Group LLC for the purchase and sale of the property commonly known as 17827-17835 Torrance Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 25-020, authorizing the execution of an agreement between the Village and Dorojo Investment Group LLC for the purchase and sale of a property commonly known as 17827 and 17835 Torrance Avenue. Are there questions or discussion? Ask the village clerk, please call the roll. Trustee Smith?
Aye.
Trustee Zeldin Russ?
Aye.
Trustee Hardy?
Aye.
Trustee Abassi?
Aye.
Trustee Grady Perovich?
Aye.
Thank you, mayor. That's all the items I have. Thank you. Police and fire, trustee Zeldin Russ.
Thank you, mayor. Just have one item, make a refer, make a motion that we accept resolution 1482, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Lansing, Board of Education, Lansing School District 215, related to school resource officers.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve resolutions 1482, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Lansing and the Board of Education of Lansing School District 215, related to school resource officers. Are there questions or discussion? Ask the village clerk, please call the roll. Trustee Zeldin Russ?
Aye.
Trustee Smith?
Aye.
Trustee Hardy?
Aye.
Trustee Abassi?
Aye.
Trustee Grady Perovich?
Aye.
Thank you, mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. Buildings and Public Works, trustee Abassi for trustee Valencia.
Thank you, mayor. Let's make a motion, we would adopt resolution number 1483, authorizing and approving the execution of an agreement by and between the Village and American Lawn LLC related to landscaping services.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 1483, authorizing and approving the execution of an agreement by and between the Village and American Lawn LLC related to landscaping services. Are there questions or discussion? Ask the village clerk, please call the roll. Trustee Abassi?
Aye.
Trustee Grady Perovich?
Aye.
Trustee Zeldin Russ?
Aye.
Trustee Smith?
Aye.
Trustee Hardy?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's make a motion that we would authorize engineering for the 2025 pavement management program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize engineering for the 2025 pavement management program. Are there questions or discussion? Ask the village clerk, please call the roll. Trustee Abassi?
Aye.
Trustee Hardy?
Aye.
Trustee Grady Perovich?
Aye.
Trustee Zeldin Russ?
Aye.
Trustee Smith?
Aye.
Thank you, mayor. No further items.
Information Technology and Allen Inn, trustee Grady Perovich?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Youth Center and HRC, trustee Hardy?
Thank you, mayor. I don't have anything, but I just want to recognize Valerie McDaniel and her commissioners. For the last four years, it's been a pleasure working with you, Valerie and the commissioners, along with Alicia at the Youth Center. I can't thank you guys enough for all your hard work. Again, it was a pleasure, and it was all mine, so yeah, thank you very much. That's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's time for public comment. If you have a public comment this evening, we ask that you wait to be recognized, then step forward to the microphone, which is on my right, provide us with your name, and please make sure that your comments are no more than five minutes. Does anyone in this room have public comments this evening? Yes? In the back? Yes. I'm sorry, Mia, we cannot carry this down. Village clerk in particular needs to hear what your comments are. If you could step forward and use the microphone? Or they're going to break.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My name is Betty Matlock, and I live at 2,991st Place in Lansing, and I just have three quick comments. One, the eastward portion of my backyard is flooding. It's been doing this over the last three years. Someone from Public Works did come out once, and it seemed to relieve the situation, but it's back again. Every time it rains, there's standing water in the backyard. The other issue is, there's a stop sign at 191st Place and Park Avenue. Most cars come to the stop sign and pause, but they don't do a complete stop, but there are other cars that just blow through the stop sign and speed excessively through the street, and I fear that someone's going to get hurt eventually, and I'd like to see something done about that. And the other issue is the sidewalks. The sidewalks are so uneven, I have a grandson who is in a wheelchair, and when I want to take him out for a stroll, it's impossible. The streets, not the streets, but the sidewalks are so uneven that it forces me to get into the street, and the streets are not that much better either. So my only choice is not to do it at all. I would really like to be able to take my grandson on a stroll in his wheelchair, but it's just impossible to do so because the sidewalks and the streets are in such poor condition. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mia. I appreciate your comments this evening. As you publicly guessed, there are representatives in the room tonight from Public Works, also the police department, and the gentleman on my left is Mr. Podgorsky. He's our village administrator. Perhaps if you get his card after the meeting, and you can reach out to him, and he can direct you and write directions for all of your issues, okay? Thank you. Does anyone else in the room have public comments this evening? I just wanted to see. Does anyone else in the room have public comments this evening?
It's like the old Phil Donahue issue.
Michael Harrison, 31, 37, 178 feet. First of all, congratulations for everybody being here for support. I wasn't expecting this big of a crowd, but I kind of knew it. I just want to say, I thank this board, I thank the mayor, I thank the clerk, I thank all of you guys for the service, for all the years I've been coming here for these meetings. This outpouring shows that you guys care for this town, you care for this village, and it's just fabulous. And I want to tell all the residents, support the next administration coming in, the new mayor, the new clerk, all the trustees, in the same type of passion. These guys, they've dedicated their lives. I've seen them being trustees, I've seen them being clerks, I've seen them when they were in the force, and I got a job over in Hammond, and I just don't feel like I do a lot of things on a day-to-day basis, and here they do real impact for all of us, for citizens, and for the village, and for our town, and I just can't just thank you enough for all your dedication and continued support for all the activities that are going on at Fox Point, and hopefully the Ford Hanger, and the airport, and all these other places. And don't be strangers, guys, keep coming back. I know you love Fox Point, and it'll be a blessing to have you finally rest and maybe enjoy your family and have some downtime. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have public comments this evening? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Do the trustees have anything for old business? Do the trustees have anything for new business? Thank you. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn side nine.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, sign die.
Second. Ask the village clerk, please call the roll. For the last time. Trustee Hardy's?
Aye.
Trustee Grady Perovich?
Aye.
Trustee Zeldin Russ?
Aye.
Trustee Smith?
Aye.
Trustee Abassi?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, as we begin the portion of tonight's meeting marking a formal change in Lansing's administrative leadership, please note that Mayor Item and Clerk Payne have already received commendation and recognition from the village in a private ceremony that was held earlier at the Lansing Municipal Center. Please join me in thanking them and bidding them a warm farewell for their many years of service to the Village of Lansing. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Mayor-elect Hardy, Clerk-elect Grady Perovich, Trustee Smith, Trustee-elect Namanson, and Trustee-elect Lamont to line up and be sworn into office. to line up and be sworn into office.
Quite a personal privilege. Can you hear me?
Yes.
For people that don't know who I am, my name's Tom Panicki. I'm a circuit court judge retired. And in 1973, I graduated from law school, came to Lansing, got hired by the then-village attorney. Thirteen years later, I became the village attorney. Sat up here for many years. And then ten years after that, I got to bench. And I was going to give just a brief history of something that occurred to me while I was village attorney. The existing board at that time, there was a two-term ordinance in existence back in 85. And the existing board at that time asked me to prepare a referendum to do away with it. They thought that why should time alone give a forced retirement date for mayors, clerks, and trustees? And so, I prepared such a referendum, and you might have guessed it lost. So, two years later, the existing board and mayor collectively, without naming any names, said that I confused them with the way I worded the referendum. Clearly, the people didn't mean to not repeal the two-term ordinance. So, we put it on again. We hired the then-law firm of Antelope Lake, which was the go-to firm then. So, they worded it very clearly, which I thought I had too. But anyway, it lost again. So, you know, Lansing is one of the few towns that has a two-term ordinance. And there's a reason for keeping it because it's a good thing. It's a good thing. You should be proud of it. These people here are applying for and getting sworn into an office that they know they have a retirement, a set retirement date. So, they're going to do their best, not looking for the votes. They're going to do what's best for them. So, ahead and said all that, thank you for listening to that background. Clearly, the majority of the people in America would take two terms for senators, and kindersmen would be... They won't pass it because they have to create that... All right. I state your name.
I'm Maureen Grady Paravich. I'm Maureen Grady Paravich.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The state of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the village of Lansing.
And the ordinances of the village of Lansing.
And discharge the duties of the office of clerk.
And discharge the duties of the office of clerk.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
It's not even the whole family, guys. We can't raise... I'm not agreeing.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
State A, Miss Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And abide by all the ethical requirements per the village of Lansing.
And abide by all the ethical requirements as a... By...
Per the village of Lansing.
Per the village of Lansing.
Cook County.
Cook County.
And I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
The office of trustee.
The office of trustee.
For the village of Lansing.
For the village of Lansing.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Ready?
Yes, I am.
Aye.
State your name. I, Ernest Lavoff Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And abide by all ethics...
And abide by all ethics.
Requirements...
Requirements.
Per the village of Lansing.
Per the village of Lansing.
In Cook County.
In Cook County.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Of trustee.
Of trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Avian Hamilton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution for the state of Illinois.
The Constitution to the state of Illinois.
And abide by all ethic...
And abide by all ethic.
Requirements...
Requirements.
For the village of Lansing.
For the village of Lansing.
And Cook County.
And Cook County.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of trustee.
Of the office of trustee.
For the village of Lansing.
For the village of Lansing.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Let's go, Brian. I, Brian Hardy. Do solemnly swear or affirm? Do solemnly swear. Or affirm. Or affirm. That I will support the Constitution. That I will support the Constitution... Of the United States. Of the United States. And the state of Illinois. And the state of Illinois. And the ordinances of the village of Lansing. And the ordinances of the village of Lansing. And I will faithfully discharge... And I will faithfully discharge... The duties of the office... The duties of the office... Of mayor. Of mayor. To the best of my ability. Right. So, help me God. I promise I'm going to make this brief, Eric. I don't know if I should sit or stand, but I'll sit.
Good on you, Brian.
Thanks, guys. First of all, thanks for all the love in this room and the support. I do want to take a moment. I do want to thank Mayor Idol for the past eight years subsisted our village and to all her residents. It was truly an honor for me to work with her and our board. We made a lot of great accomplishments. My goal is to keep those accomplishments rolling and thank the Lansing people, I guess, I have to say. I promise I will make it short, but I do got to say some things. But anyway, my wife, Kathy. First lady of Lansing. And she's going to do us all proud, I know that. But she is the rock. And I've said this time and time again, but she is the rock of our family. Her support to me, our children, our...